...of the Folsom City Council for December 8th, 2020.
Okay, we'll call the roll as council members Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here.
Okay, our first item is business from the floor. There's nobody in the chamber currently, but we do have callers who would like to speak. This is an opportunity to talk on topics that are not on our agenda, and the council cannot deliberate on these items at this time since they are not agendized.
Okay, we'll be calling orders of speakers in order. I'll let you know who's speaking next and who's coming afterwards. And as a reminder, each speaker is given three minutes, and we'll let you know when you hit your three-minute limit. Our first speaker will be Vijay Jana Lagada, who will be followed by Scott Rafferty. Vijay, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, Krista, thank you. Okay, I wanted to talk about the bi-districting. Can you guys hear me right?
Yes, we can hear you very well, thank you.
Okay, okay, sorry. All right, okay, so I wanted to talk about the bi-districting system. So the current at-large system has its issues, and I would like to propose that our city to go bi-district system because I have like the three reasons mainly that it is a natural progression for any big city. Folsom is coming out to be a big city. It is, as the south of Folsom, development is also complete. We will be hitting 100,000 population limit and everything. So that's one of the main points I wanted to make. That way, it's like a better representation for the people. And the second point I want to make was that it is, it allows a grassroots democracy so that each resident in the city will feel that hey, their voice is being heard and that, you know, they have a kind of a contact person to air their grievances or to go person there being their council member. Right now, we have a large system, you know, it is too hard for all the five. I mean, if there is a specific issue, who is going to contact? Like, you know, if I had to go to one council member, then that person may or may not do it, and then I had to approach other council member. If one council member doesn't know if the resident is approaching other council members also. All of that is really not a good system. And finally, it's a, the argument that, you know, if we have a separate district members, the council member for each district, then each council member will be focusing on their district and the overall city business, that the issues concerning the whole city as a whole will take a backseat. I don't think that, I don't buy that argument because I trust my council members and they're smart enough to know what is, what should take the priority and what is in the context of what is mainly for the big city issue. I mean, city issue for the city as a whole and issue for their own district. So anyway, I really support the bi-district system and I would, I seriously ask council members to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Scott Rafferty, and Scott will be followed by Cheryl Davis. Scott, go ahead.
Hi, well, as you know, I am the attorney that was approached this spring by this remarkable group of your constituents who are some of the most committed and well-informed and passionate advocates I've seen. The most remarkable thing about Folsom is, and it shocked me, when we created that map of where all these signatures were coming from, and it literally is every corner of your city. That is quite unusual. And even though their petition had a big Democratic Party logo on the top of it, it was also startling to find that only about 60% of the signatories were registered Democrats. And so it has very broad-based support, and I think that's the reason you should do this. And also, the reason it has broad-based support, it doesn't have to be about race as so much as, you know, this is the, local government was invented in the United States or in the colonies, and the idea of having your own councilperson for your neighborhood was the American way for three centuries. And it led to good negotiators, representative government. It was the model for Congress. So these are all the positive reasons to do this. I was also startled that last election, when we finally ran the numbers, that's a highly polarized election. When you look at YK's, where YK's votes were coming from, I wasn't expecting that. I did expect, because I kept hearing he was a good candidate, that he would do better and probably win this time. But, you know, that doesn't really, that's after the bell was rung. The legislature was concerned when they wrote the fact that people would vote defensively and they'd say, this is a very famous case where people said, "Vote for me," you know, to prove they're not, we're not racist. And that way, we won't, we can get rid of these district election issue. And now I think it's very different. I think people, when the bell is rung and people look around, they say, "Let's have a more diverse council." So I would view the election as a mandate. I mean, you now have an agent on the council. You have Lutino on the council who was endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, these are, these are new things in Folsom, and they should be, it's not about the current incumbents, it's a long-term reform. You should preserve these things because it is, it's been the norm, at least since 1965 in the rest of the country. California is a bit of an outlier. But it's a system that works, and as public officials, you should do it because your constituents want it, but because it's going to make your council more effective, more representative, and more accountable. It's, so I hope you do it for those reasons. The issue of how you draw the lines is down the road. I've worked with your attorney on the issue of the census data. We really.
Mr. Rafferty, you're over time now. Can you wrap up, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say, we want you to do this after the census, and we'll work with you on that. Thank you.
Ten-four.
Thank you. Next will be Cheryl Davis, and Cheryl will be followed by Dolly Sood. Cheryl, are you on the line? Your phone might be muted if you are. We're not hearing you. Okay, we're going to move on to Dolly Sood. We'll check back with Cheryl in a bit. So Dolly Sood, if you're available, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much, counsel, for giving us an opportunity. I support the bi-district level elections in Folsom. Like around us, we see that a lot of California cities are going this way. I ask the council to take action to bring Folsom in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. It is a long-term reform, and we truly believe that this will make our council more effective and representative. It is in the best interest of Folsom, and that's what we all are working for, correct? That's why we do urge you to make this a priority and support it fully. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll check back if we have Cheryl on the line. Okay, we're going to move on to Muriel Brownstein, who will be followed by Hari Shetty. Muriel, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I want to say that I'm glad that the mayor is well enough to be at the meeting today.
Thank you.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay. Our group has been organizing in Folsom, for Folsom neighborhood elections now for over two years. We've collected over 300 signatures from Folsom residents in all parts of Folsom who are Democrats, Republicans, and independents. You have received over 50 emails asking that you put bi-district elections on today's agenda and make a firm irrevocable commitment to have future city council elections conducted by districts in order to be in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. Jennifer Lane, who has run for a seat on the Folsom City Council twice and lost both times, is a perfect example of why we need bi-district elections in Folsom. She's lived in Old Town for more than 30 years. She knows that area and its problems and would be the perfect advocate. Both times, she received a majority of votes cast in her part of town, yet she wasn't elected. If Folsom would have had district elections, Jennifer would have been elected to the council and would have been able to address the special concerns of Old Town Folsom. And all areas of town had different concerns. No city in California, if sued by the, for, over bi-district elections, has won, and the city of Palm Vale spent, I believe, 4.7, 4.6 million dollars trying to beat this, beat this. We would consider it a waste of Folsom taxpayers' money for the council not to make a firm commitment and go to bi-district elections. And in future city council elections, voters will remember which city council members voted to waste the city's money. Please make the decision on your own to go to bi-district elections. I believe that if you make the decision, you are allowed to draw the boundaries. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
We will next go to Hari Shetty, and Hari will be followed by Bob Dresser. Hari, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you very well. Go ahead.
If that's Krista, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak, and also, respected mayor and the council members. I am the resident of Folsom for the last 21 years. I'm also glad to know that Mayor Aquino is present there because I know that she's going through some challenges, but I'm glad to know that you're there. And I am calling in support of the district election for some of the points I have just jotted down here. I have at least seven points or maybe more. One of the reasons I think a district-wide election would be good is because of cost-effectiveness. Not only for the candidates, but also for the city. If the city saves money, that means we all save money as residents, including council members and all the citizens. And other thing is, like Vijay mentioned earlier, better representation. Because when I go around in the district, I sometimes, they're all in the city, think that residents are not well-represented because, you know, council members are in some part of the city, but they're not all around the city or surrounded by different parts of the community. So that means we got to have more or better representation so that there is more direct communication, networking, collaboration opportunities with the residents of our growing city. Third point I want to make is increased efficiency in city management by the council. Like, we can have with doing a decentralized, district-wide thing, we have representation and council members for every single community as we are growing very fast. And you know that there should be equal opportunity. As cities going so rapidly, I'm sure that, as I see the statistics, we're going to have 100,000 or more people in the next five to 10 years because Folsom branch is like growing very fast. So we got to be really proactive here. And fair election opportunity, that's my fifth point. Because, you know, generally, if somebody has to run for the election as a resident, you know, we need large funds to run for the election with interest groups, special groups, sometimes support from the Chamber of Commerce, fire, and police department. Rather, it must be simple enough that any candidate, any resident of the Folsom city should be able to run with the support of friends, families, and the resident's support. So sixth point I'm going to make is increased participation by the residents, which connected to what I just mentioned. For example, I recently ran for the school district. When a school district was district, was a district election, I thought I can run for it within $2,000 of campaign fund with my own money or my friend's money. So if that happens with the city, there'll be more residents willing to participate in the city council participation because you're all doing a great job, but we need more residents able to participate in this whole process. And lastly, I want to mention that according to California Voting Rights Act, which is CVRA, and we got to do this as quick as possible because instead of going into litigation and spending thousands of dollars, maybe 30,000 or more on this litigation process, et cetera, just like how Davies and Elgrove has done a good job in district-wide election process, why don't we step in now proactively and do a good job? So these are some of the points I just thought about it. And I know I have a lot of respect for city council, mayor, and all the council members. They're all doing a great job, and residents want to do and support and help here. So that's my few points here. And thank you again for giving me an opportunity to speak, and I wish good luck to the mayor and the new council. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next will be Bob Dresser, and Bob will be followed by Tony Oliver.
Hello, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the city council. Although we're one city, you know, we have different neighborhoods, and sometimes they have different needs. Economic issues, social issues. Sometimes various racial groups might congregate in certain areas of the city. But there are often different interests. For example, whether the streets are adequate in one area or one district compared to another. Owners of homes versus those who rent. Equal fire and police services throughout each area of the city. Same with parks. Some areas of Folsom have beautiful parks, like in my area. Some, not so much. Now, even the quality of schools may vary from area to area, district to district. And even such mundane issues as water availability, given all the construction that's going down south of 50, that might present issues that impact the different areas differently. Generally, in my opinion, there are more interests in common in particular areas. I do believe it's less expensive to conduct campaigns in district elections as contrasted with citywide elections. And I would just point out, I suppose, that the new law in California stresses the community of interest is the real driver, whether it's ethnicity, environment, renter versus owner. And I think, to be fair, smaller districts rather, as opposed to the full city, will get better representation. And as someone said earlier, to avoid litigation costs. So I would respectfully request that you seriously consider voting to approve city council elections by district. And I want to thank you very much for listening, and have a good holiday.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have Tony Oliver. But before Tony begins, can I just remind everybody, if you're not speaking, to please mute your phone. We're getting a little bit of background noise here, which makes it hard to hear. So Tony, you'll be next, followed by Bernie Dooley.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, counsel, and thank you all of my fellow participants. First, I'd like to highlight that all of us are gathered here today not to indict the city council or anything along those lines. This is not a personal attack, no incident, anything to any sort of party line. Instead, it's just a recognition that Folsom has grown. And with Folsom's growth, the government should align with it. If Folsom were to be founded right now with its current population, chances are, we wouldn't choose the same level, the model of government that we currently have. There's a reason why the House of Representatives is the House of the People. Those folks who are elected to it are more closely aligned with their constituents than, say, senators who represent the entire state. So with that, I do want to highlight, thanks to the Voting, the Voting Act that's been referred to numerous times, it's not hard to do the right thing. In this case, it's easy to do the right thing. And I say that not just because it's the most applicable and the most, your main model for Folsom, but also because we can follow and we can learn from all of the other municipalities that have adopted this model. We can take a look at what has worked and how they've gone about implementing it, how they've gone about educating all of their inhabitants, and how about making sure that the spirit of the law and the spirit of the drive is really held. And that is to make sure that there is closer representation within each set of neighborhoods. So with that, again, I thank you, and I yield the floor to the next person.
Thank you.
Okay, your next speaker is Bernie Dooley, and Bernie will be followed by Jennifer Lane. Bernie, go ahead.
Hi. I support bi-district elections and want the city council to make a firm commitment to have future elections by districts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Jennifer Lane. Go ahead.
Hi, Krista. Counsel, thank you for entertaining our discussion. I really listened in tonight because I wanted to hear more about the districting. And as I listened to all the speakers, I became aware that, yeah, you know, you know I live in the historic district and have for over 35 years. And the bottom line is, we have so many issues and have had them for over 20, 25 years. In fact, I know so many people in the historic district based on all of our issues. So somewhat, it's been a good thing. But I really think we should network together as neighborhoods. We do identify the problems that each neighborhood has. I think we need to keep them as a priority. And that's really all I have to say. I'm going to be listening in from now on and paying attention. I think we're on the right track for districting. But again, I feel a little negligible at this time. So thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. I wanted to circle back and see if Cheryl Davis is on the line. Okay, not hearing from Cheryl Davis. That concludes the list of speakers I had signed up to speak. Is there anybody else on the line who wanted an opportunity to speak? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I was kind of cut off. I had to get back on. This is Robert G. Holderness, Folsom resident living in 122 Oak Rock Circle. I wanted to comment on the district issue. First of all, just to give context, I'm a lifelong Democrat. I was the president of the Capital City Democratic Club for approximately four years. I was the vice chairman of the Sacramento County Central Committee, Democratic Central Committee, for over two years. And I was the campaign chairman for the Unified Democratic Campaign Committee in the 1978 election where Jerry Brown ran for reelection in November 1978. And I mentioned that to just establish my credibility as a Democrat because I know this proposal is being promoted as a Democrat proposal. And in, at least in my instance, that is not so. I don't support this measure. And I don't primarily because I had the great honor and distinct pleasure and privilege to serve on the city council for eight years. And I learned through experience that logic, the wisdom, the dynamics of our current system, and it works well, and we should continue to let it work well. And without belaboring, I'll boil it down to one thing. In 2018 and in 2020, every registered voter in Folsom had a chance to vote on each of the five seats that were available for election, the three in 18 and the two this year. Every voter voted or had a chance to vote on all five of those. If you adopt a district election system in the same period of four years, a voter will only get a vote once for city council. And so to draw the analogy, that would mean in 2022, there'll be three seats up. If you're in a district that is up then, you'll only be able to vote for one of three. And in 2024, when there are two seats up, you will vote for none of them. That is not good democracy. It's disenfranchising our voters by 80%, and there's no good reason for it. Now, YK's election and Rosario's election shows that Folsom doesn't need the help of the California Legislature to elect energetic, qualified, ambitious minorities to high office. We've done it. We've proven it. And Reggie Drew, God love him, back in 96, a black African-American, he also was elected for the same reason, energetic, strong leader at the time. So there you go. That's all I have to say. That's my two cents worth. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll just give one last chance if there's any other callers on the line for this item. Okay, seeing none, we will move on.
Terrific. Would, will the clerk please call the next item?
So the next item is adjournment to closed session for the following purposes. You have two items before you tonight. The first, number one, is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 for the case identified. The second item, again, is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. One potential case.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Kozlowski.
Yes.
Okay, so for those of you who are still on the line, the city council is going to adjourn into closed session. We anticipate they will be in closed session until 6:30. You're welcome to stay on the line if you want or call back in on the 6:30 regular line.
The special meeting of the Folsom City Council. Mr. City Attorney, was there any final action to report?
No further action, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to adjourn the special meeting of the city council and switch to the other agenda. And I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the city council for December 8th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you. And if everybody could stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any agenda updates for this evening?
You have one agenda update this evening. Item number nine from your consent calendar has been amended. The amendments have been provided to the council, and copies are available at the back table for members of the public who might be interested.
Terrific. Okay, first up, we're going to do business from the floor. This is the time in the meeting when members of the public can comment to the city council on anything within the council's purview that is not already on the agenda for this evening. So if there's anybody in the chamber that would like to come to the microphone and share some thoughts, now is the time.
Okay, you have no blue cards requesting to speak from the audience? And seeing no one coming forward, we will just check to see, are there any callers on the line who wanted to speak under business from the floor?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. And if you can give us your name, if you don't mind, and we'll start the clock. You'll have three minutes.
Sure. I'm Dolly Sood. I support this is regarding, should I start?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. This is regarding the bi-district elections in Folsom request. I do support the bi-district level elections in Folsom. I ask the council to take action to bring Folsom in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. It is a long-term reform which will make the council more effective and more representative. It is in the best interest for Folsom, and that's what we all are working for, correct? That's why we urge you to make this a priority and support it. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else on the line who would like to speak?
Yes, I would. Scott, do you want to speak?
No, go ahead, Muriel.
Okay. This is Muriel Brownstein. A group of us have been organizing Folsom neighborhood elections now for over two years. We've collected over 300 signatures from Folsom residents in all parts of Folsom who are Democrats, Republicans, and independents. You have received over 50 emails asking that you put bi-district elections on today's agenda and make a firm irrevocable commitment to have future city council elections conducted by district in order to be in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. Unfortunately, I don't believe you did put it on the agenda. We had hoped you would. Jennifer Lane, who has run for the seat, for a seat on the city council, has run twice and lost both times. It's a perfect example of why we need to have bi-district elections in Folsom. She's lived in Old Town for more than 30 years. She knows the area and its problems and would be the perfect advocate for that area. Both times, she received a majority of the votes cast in her part of town, yet she was not elected. If Folsom would have had district elections, Jennifer would have been elected to the council and would have been able to address the special concerns of Old Town Folsom. No city in California, if sued over bi-district elections, has. No city in California, if sued over, uh, by-district elections, has won, and the city of Palmville spent about four-point-six million dollars trying. We would consider a waste of Folsom taxpayers' money for the council not to make a firm commitment to go to by-district elections. In future city council elections, voters will remember which council members voted to waste the city's money. Please make the decision on your own, city council members, to go to by-district elections. Then you will be able to draw the boundaries and not some other commission. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do we have another caller who would like to speak?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, Scott Rafferty. May I speak?
Okay, Scott, go ahead. We'll start the timer for you. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to invite the public to, uh, take a look at the original petition from February, uh, and the subsequent petition from October, uh, that has asked the, uh, city council, uh, to go to, um, single-member constituencies. Uh, you know, local government was really invented in our country, and this is the American way. California, not so much, uh, which is why we have the California Voting Rights Act, to restore district elections, to restore where every neighborhood has a dedicated voice on the city council. Because right now, uh, Folsom, if you're on the other side of Bidwell Avenue, or you're, uh, downtown, uh, there's no member of the council who lives anywhere near you, and there's no former member of the council, uh, that, uh, has, that lives in those areas. You'd expect with that kind of, uh, of discrepancy that it would be people from those areas that would be joining this cause. But I was really stunned to find that when you take the three-hundred-plus people, uh, who signed this petition, uh, they're from every nook and cranny of this city. Uh, and, uh, even though the original petition was, uh, circulated by the Democratic Club and had a big Democratic logo on it, uh, only sixty percent of the signers were Democrats. There were lots of Republicans, lots of independents, uh, every party was represented. So it's a very broad movement, uh, and, uh, it's, it, it really will make, uh, the council, uh, more effective, more representative. It will attract, over the long term, this isn't about anybody that's up there now, but over the long term, it will mean that there are good negotiators who are elected, uh, who are accountable, who have a different focus, uh, who can work with each other to make sure that everybody is represented. Uh, I heard earlier this, this evening that, that it was, uh, disenfranchisement, not allowing to vote for all the city council members. Well, think about voting for four-hundred-and-thirty-five congressmen. It would mean that you didn't have your own congressman, and that system wouldn't work very well, which is why, uh, Alexander Hamilton based Congress on what he'd learned from a hundred-and-fifty years of success in the New York City Council. So this is, this is the way America works, the way government works. And I urge you to move forward with it. Uh, uh, there's a separate process where you'll get public input and be able to draw the lines yourself. Uh, that's the advantage of going forward with this. We don't have to do this until, until the census data is available, and that could be slightly delayed. So I hope the public will take a look at that, and, uh, uh, you know, I think both I and my client are available for any questions that may come from the public. Our contact information is, is right there. So thank you very much, and I hope the council decides to move forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else on the line who would like to speak?
Okay, hearing none. Um, it's probably worthwhile to mention that we received sixty, like six-zero, um, requests, um, similar to what you just heard as testimony by email or other means of communication to the, to City Hall. Those have all been shared with the city council, so we've, we've, um, read, read all of those things as well. Again, this is business from the floor. It's not a point where we can take action on this particular item or any, um, but it's something that we have taken seriously. So thank you very much for all of that testimony, and we are gonna move on to the consent calendar. And I guess I will ask our two new city council people first if they have any particular consent items that they would like to pull to discuss, and then carry on.
I, I do don't have any items.
Okay.
I'll move, I'll move consent calendar.
I'll second.
Well, hold on just one second.
Um, I'm sorry. Um, I, I do have some to pull out. I need some clarification or discussion, if that's okay.
Yeah. Which items?
Uh, I know I didn't bring the binder. In my day two, they gave us a four-hundred-and-sixty pages to read and get ready. I'm just kidding. Um, the items certainly, um, nineteen? That's not part of the consent calendar.
Nineteen is a public hearing that we will all discuss next. Um, from the items one through eighteen, is there any that you wanna pull to discuss?
Twelve.
Okay, so item number twelve, we're gonna set aside for the moment.
And fourteen.
And fourteen, okay. And then I'd like to, um, um, have us discuss number sixteen just briefly.
Okay, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for consent minus twelve, fourteen, and sixteen.
And that is with item number nine as amended?
And with item number nine as amended.
Okay. So, um, on that motion, councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, item number twelve is Resolution Number ten-five-six-six, a resolution to maintain existing speed limits on various streets throughout Folsom. You had questions?
The question sees, uh, I was going through the numbers, and, um, even though some of the percentiles, i- it's easy one. Uh, some of the percentiles, if I see it, you know, it's a twenty-five miles per hour speed limit, I see the eighty-five percentile is thirty-five, sometimes thirty-seven, and on the fifty-two speed limit, sometimes sixty-seven. So those are the numbers. People are going eighty-fifth percentile, if I understand correctly.
That's correct.
Right? Um, I know we are going to say, yes, that's what you're here, you know, just approve the same speed limits. The point I want to make, you know, not right now, uh, anything we can do, at least sometimes it is a ten miles extra, sometimes twelve, fifteen, in a small, you know, city lines, uh, that concerns as a resident. So, uh, what kind of steps we can take at least those five, six areas out of, you know, so many streets? Uh, I know it's not just our, uh, your side, it's again, um, our police and all those. Just want to hear, uh, anything we are going to do on those high things.
Yes, sir. So, so this is, uh, kind of a general comment?
Yeah.
About, um, uh, areas where the, the prevailing speed is considerably higher than what the posted and recommended speed limits are?
That's right.
Okay. So, um, y- you're correct that, that it is a partnership between the Folsom Police Department and their enforcement and education efforts, and the Public Works Department, and our engineering and education efforts to, um, to try to, um, induce lower speeds wherever possible.
Yeah.
Um, w- one of the things that we are currently wrapping up citywide is a local road safety plan, which is a Caltrans mandated, um, study, you know, where you look at the, um, traffic collisions that have been reported in the city, uh, historically, and, and you, uh, do an analysis of the causes and, and the, the conditions that were present. And, and that study is making recommendations about, um, safety improvements that can be done?
Right.
In those areas where we have high collision rates. Um, we, we actually came to this city council earlier this year, um, to get authorization to submit several grants to the Highway Safety Improvement Program through, which is administered by Caltrans. And if we're successful in, uh, getting any of those grants awarded, uh, it will lead to, uh, traffic signal modifications to, uh, to try to, um, coordinate our signals and, and induce slower speeds along, yeah, as traffic progresses along corridors. narrower lanes, um, uh, where feasible, uh, 'cause narrow lanes can, at times, uh, cause motorists to, to want to go a little slower. Better signage. Um, and we are also starting to, to look again at, uh, neighborhood-level traffic management strategies, uh, um, where we have extremely high, uh, speeding issues in a neighborhood street.
Right.
Does that address your, your question?
It is, it is. Probably, I know it's, um, I'm sorry, I'm going to say this, it's day two as a council member, uh, but our, uh, Madam City Manager gave us an option if we want to learn more about it, how these programs are. It's concerning when fifty-five, seven, sixty-seven is going, eighty-five percentile, it's a big number, and the twenty-five, thirty-seven going, that's more concerning. You know, kids may, people may be walking. It's, uh, more local roads. Some of those probably, you know, alarming, you know, we can talk offline, uh, but gra, good part is, you're keeping the limits in the same. You're not proposing anything to increase on consent calendar at all. But thank you for the extra grants, our funds looking around and, you know, put some safety measures, uh, to protect more safer. I always listen to, you know, uh, Councilmember Howell, um, safety, traffic, you know, please, save a life, you know, but thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions about item number twelve?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, item number fourteen is Resolution Number one-zero-five-six-eight, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Soraco Inc. for the construction of the Oak Avenue Pump Station Peak Wet Weather Flow Relief Project and appropriation of funds.
Okay. Once again, Mr. Chalamchela, did you have questions?
Um, I know, I think I was briefly talking to him there, but, uh, you know, I'm probably going to repeat, if that's okay with, uh, absolutely. It's a learning curve, again. Uh, as I was going through, I think, uh, we are having a two contracts in place, uh, one for the sewer system and other one to monitor the sewer system, the management. If you can give a little bit more clarity on that one, especially pertaining to the fourteen, is going to help another consent calendar item.
Will do. Mayor Kozlowski, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental Water Resources Director, uh, Councilmember Chalamchela, there are two items. The, the one item that was pulled, number fourteen, is for the construction. So that is for a physical construction project that's within our capital improvement program for the wastewater, uh, collection system. So it's improvements near the Oak Avenue Pump Station, uh, on Oak Avenue Parkway. The second item, which is number fifteen, is for the construction management and inspection of that project. So what that requires is, uh, these projects typically require full-time, onsite, construction management and inspection. So, uh, the person or people representing the city, uh, out in the field from the ICM Group are basically our eyes and ears in the field, but they're monitoring the workmanship, they're ensuring that the construction is to the city's, uh, specifications and standards. Uh, they're also coordinating material testing. And given the location of some of this work in East Bidwell, we are likely going to have some night work to get out of the higher, uh, traffic times. And so, uh, this does have a portion of the project that would require, uh, some night work, and there is, uh, a significant shutdown of the Oak Avenue Pump Station and some bypass pumping setup that we'd have to, uh, have in place, which, uh, obviously cannot fail. So that has a, a higher level of, uh, coordination and, uh, inspection out in the field. And so, instead of having maybe some of our staff who normally work during the day out in the field at these nighttime shutdowns, which would mean they couldn't come into work the next morning, we do hire, uh, outside consulting staff, uh, specifically in construction management and inspection to oversee the construction of our capital projects for both water and wastewater.
Yeah. Uh, the reason why I pulled that one fourteen, I know when we are awarding fifteen, um, I know when I was reading through it, the sense I got is, is that fifteen includes you of delivering the quality product, hence we don't need fourteen. I know we were rushing to, you know, discuss there. That's what my main question, when we are already awarding one-point-three millions for delivering the quality product for us, and we are putting one more quality team to oversee it, that's where probably some clarification, which you gave. I think it's again a learning curve, adapting to the city governance, how here we work, maybe.
Okay, I think I understand the, uh...
I think what might be helpful is, uh, we have to do these as two separate items because we're contracting with two different firms.
Yeah. So I will add...
One is to, one is to build it, and the other one is to inspect it.
There you go. That was what I was gonna state, that one contract is awarding the physical construction of the project, and then the second contract is having basically an extension of staff in the field, ensuring that the contractor is building it correctly per the contract and per the city standards.
I'm good, thank you.
Excellent. I have one, I have one quick question. What's roughly your calendar for doing this work? When do you expect to start it?
Uh, I will have to double-check because, um, the contract, I believe, allows up to a four-month start period. And so typically what we like to do, especially if we're taking a pump station out of service, uh, on the sewer side, is to get that construction started outside of the winter period where you might have your peak flows. So I would imagine, I can check with staff, but I would imagine if we're looking at a four-month period, it might be towards the end of winter, maybe the beginning of, uh, the beginning, sorry, of spring. And then one thing we gotta coordinate too is also when we have to repave the roads that we, uh, dig up, we obviously don't wanna have, you know, temporary pavement, pavement there too long before we get into good paving weather, so...
'Cause the second they take that pump station out of service, it's gonna rain.
Oh, absolutely. That's why I was asking, 'cause I wanna make sure I...
Yep.
Get the grass in before...
So yes, I believe this one wa, was set up with a, I wouldn't call it a rolling construction window, but with an opportunity to schedule this out into the spring...
Sure.
Knowing that it is, uh, trying to work around the winter conditions.
Terrific, thank you very much. Um, are there any other questions?
I just want to make the comment. I know, uh, Madam City Manager gave us an overview on this, but in a short, one-day, two-day, going through all those, trying to digest everything, you know, uh, sometimes we can do this offline also, getting you up front, but we didn't get enough time to go through that one. I just want to make that comment, you know?
You, you should never apologize for asking questions. Someone else out there may have the same one.
Okay.
Always do that. Thank you.
I'll move item fourteen.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And, and I asked for item number sixteen, Resolution ten-five-seventy-one, to be pulled so I could just, um, daylight the projects that we are gonna be seeking grants for from, um, the SECOG process. So just curious if you could give us a rundown of what the grant applications will entail.
Yes, sir, Mayor Kozlowski.
Thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to introduce myself earlier. Good evening, I'm Mark Rackavan, the Engineering Manager with the city Folsom Public Works Department. I think I've been, uh, working from home so long, I'm, I'm losing my, my edge. Bear with me. Uh, so the item, uh, before you today is, uh, seeking, um, authorization to submit grant applications to the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, um, for the allocation of state transportation and air quality funds. SECOG, uh, administers those funds on a wholly competitive process through the entire six-county region. Uh, and so, um, we have, uh, put together a list of about a dozen projects that are, um, public works projects, both design and construction, uh, community development projects, uh, and transportation planning in nature, and, um, bike and ped projects through the Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, the call for applications went out, I believe, in October, and I, uh, solicited each of the departments, uh, to put together a, a comprehensive list of all of the projects they would like to submit. Uh, and then we all got together, um, in mid-November, uh, to wrestle over what the priority ranking would be for these dozen projects. This is a new requirement, uh, for this round of SECOG funding and a welcome addition. In the past, uh, projects were just submitted to SECOG, uh, without any sense of what the local agency's priorities were, and the selection committee would decide, um, without that information, what they thought was the highest priority project. And while that hasn't really bit Folsom, um, other agencies have in the past been awarded funding for projects that really weren't their highest priority project, but they were the ones that SECOG favored. So this ranking... priority project, but they were the ones that SECOG favored, so this ranking, uh, process that we're asking you to endorse this evening is very important in communicating our community's priorities and rankings, uh, so that they can take that into consideration, so the specific projects, uh, I'll just run through very quickly, um, we've ranked as the number one priority, the US fifty East Bidwell improvements, and this is actually a combination of improvements to the intersection at East Bidwell and Iron Point Road, uh, creating a triple left turn in the westbound direction, um, and then widening the westbound on-ramp to add an additional mixed flow vehicle lane, because that triple left turn is very heavily populated by traffic that is then immediately getting on the westbound on-ramp, so, Caltrans has insisted that if we're going to do the triple left, that we, uh, expand that ramp as well, so that, that's our recommended highest priority project, the, the second priority project is our intelligent transportation systems master plan, these are technological improvements and upgrades to the over one hundred traffic signals that we have, uh, throughout the city of Folsom, and it also encompasses, um, other forms of traffic management in between those traffic signals, whether driver information, signage, uh, flow monitoring equipment, things that try to maximize the capacity on our roadways through, uh, maximizing the efficiency of our transfer, our, our traffic signal system, uh, we've ranked as our third priority, the Scott Road realignment, now this is actually a project that is not currently within the city of Folsom, it is a project of the Capitol Southeast Connector, and it's going to realign Scott Road south of White Rock Road, uh, to tie in to Prairie City Road, the reason this shows up on our priority list is because it will eventually form the access road to our future corporation yard, and so that's why, uh, we have a vested interest in this road being completed at some point, it isn't our recommended highest priority at this point, because the corp yard is not eminent, uh, if we were already, you know, constructing that corp yard, or, or thought it was something that was going to be happening in the next two years, that probably would have bumped it up in priority, but we felt that this was the appropriate location to convey how important it is to the city of Folsom at this point, um, while, uh, still supporting the, uh, the connector and their efforts to get funding for the project, um, the Empire Ranch Interchange is our fourth priority project at this point, uh, we are currently in the preliminary design phase, and we're, uh, about ready to release the environmental document to the public for, for public review, and then eventually, once the public document is, uh, uh, we, we've, excuse me, once we've received all the public comment, we will bring that document here for certification, and then we will complete the process with Caltrans that will allow us to go into final design, so what we're asking funding for in this particular funding round would be to allow us to go to final design, pay for any environmental mitigation that comes out of that report, and then we'll come back in future funding rounds for funding assistance to help, uh, get us to, um, construction, uh, and I should note that, uh, the Folsom Plan Area, specific plan, is, uh, required to pay for forty percent of the cost of that interchange, so that's factored into our, uh, grant application, uh, request, we have a drainage project here on Natoma Street, uh, we've actually already started this project, phase one of that project improved, um, uh, some of the drainage in the vicinity of the Natoma and Scott intersection, uh, and now we're going to take that same, um, drainage area, uh, we're going to realign and re- replace, uh, some more drainage facilities further down Natoma Street and Riley Street, um, the Folsom Placerville Rail Trail is our sixth priority, uh, this is an extension of the, uh, existing bicycle trail that runs parallel to the railroad tracks a- along East Bidwell Street, uh, right now that tra- uh, trail stops just north of California Family Fitness, uh, and what, uh, we're hoping to do is, is get construction funding, uh, to extend that all the way down to Iron Point Road, and possibly all the way to, uh, the Highway fifty underpass at Old Placerville Road, uh, Oak Avenue Complete Streets, this is a project we've had kicking around, uh, since, uh, well, about nineteen ninety-nine, uh, we, we came with a, a notion of using the six-lane right-of-way on Oak Avenue Parkway, and instead of building a six-lane arterial, building a four-lane arterial with a, a bicycle facility, and then improving the intersection at Folsom Auburn Road, which, um, you know, most of you know has some capacity issues during peak hour, and adding traffic controls at the Baldwin Dam Road intersection, uh, this project has competed fairly well in past funding rounds, but unfortunately has never, uh, been awarded funding, uh, we're just taking a, another shot at it.
And getting, getting rid of that stop sign and putting a signal in at Baldwin Dam would be very, very good for traffic flow on Oak Avenue.
Or a roundabout.
Absolutely.
Or a roundabout, yeah, um, the eighth priority project, Blue Ravine Road Pavement Rehab, this is in the, uh, area from, um, Prairie City Road to Oak Avenue Parkway, uh, very stra- uh, straightforward asphalt concrete overlay on that roadway, uh, no, um, modifications to the, the, uh, traffic lanes or, or traffic controls, uh, priority number nine, Folsom Boulevard Bicycle and Ped Overcrossing, this is another project that we've taken a, a couple of shots at SECOG funding in the past, uh, all we're looking for at this point is, uh, to do a feasibility study, right now the idea is to, uh, to evaluate an overcrossing that would tie the, uh, Robert G. Holderness Glen Light Rail Station, uh, across Folsom Boulevard, and then daylighting at Park Shore Drive, which, uh, is a connection, uh, or further down the road, there's a connection to the American River Bike Trail, so it seemed like a really ideal location to take advantage of the bike trail and the light rail station.
Mark, I think, I think we've, um, gotten down the list far enough that my next question's going to be pertinent, just to modulate everybody's expectations, what does a successful funding round look like in terms of working your way down past the things you've described already?
Uh, well, let's see, I think I, I have estimated that we are looking at about fifty million dollars worth of grant applications that we're going to submit, and we would be very fortunate to get about twenty percent of that in this funding round.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, you know, we're, we're taking a shot at a lot of things, we've consulted with SECOG staff on, on the breadth and depth of our, our list, and they, they did not discourage us from submitting them all.
Yeah, thank you very much, I really, I appreciate you going through that, yeah.
I have one question, and so, so city staff has prioritized the projects, we're blessing the prioritization tonight, but does SECOG have the ability to kind of leapfrog and say, yeah, we're not funding number one, but we're going to give you money for two and three?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, this, um, you know, we had quite an arm wrestling match with SECOG over the past, what, two years at least, that's been actually going on much longer about the way that they, the, uh, how the distribution of funds goes, and, um, the addition of this prioritization step, um, hopefully is a step in the right direction, it'll help us control our fate a little bit more, um, I, I think the priorities, as you've laid them out, are spot on, so thank you.
Yeah.
Very good, any questions from anybody else?
No, I will move item number consent, uh, number sixteen.
Just clarification, I think you mentioned in the number, SECOG can say, no, we will fund you number four, maybe not one, two, three, they can say that.
That, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, and especially number four, though, I hope El Dorado is putting the same pressure, is the SECOG part of El Dorado?
No, Sacramento County, um.
Yeah, El Dorado County is part of SECOG, but their transportation funds are distributed differently.
Differently.
Yeah.
We want them in the game for that one.
Certainly. Excellent, we have a motion?
Yes.
They're moved.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Thank you very much, yes, okay, call the next item.
Okay, your next item is your public hearing, hearing item number nineteen, this is ordinance number thirteen ten, an uncodified ordinance adopting prima facie speed limits on the streets identified, this is introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Mark, you're the star of the show tonight.
Yes, yes, thank you, again, I'm Mark Rackevan, your engineering manager with the Public Works Department, and I, uh, need to find a presentation for you that I actually should help, uh, councilmembers Chalamchela and Rodriguez, uh, with, uh, some of the fundamentals having to do with, uh, the, uh, setting and adoption of speed limits.
Right, uh, I know, uh, David, Dave forwarded, I tried, I got some, but.
Let's see, there's our presentations, okay, found it, and just, uh, yeah, um, I do have all of the actual raw data from the surveys, if, uh, you would like to actually see specific survey results, we do have that information, okay, so, again, the, the item before you this evening is to establish speed limits on some new roadways, uh, in the city of Folsom, as well as some roads that were recently, uh, re-engineered significantly, um, most of our surveys, uh, citywide, were last, uh, updated in two thousand and ten, and, and therefore require updates in order to enable the Folsom Police Department to continue to, uh, do radar speed enforcement on, on our roadways, um, this presentation will also hopefully provide you with an understanding of, of speed limit principles and, and the regulations that we have to adhere to, and, and expectations, and then of course to adopt, uh, the speed limits on the roadway segments that are listed in the ordinance, so the basic speed law, uh, you, you mentioned this, Councilmember Chalamchela, uh, that no person shall drive a vehicle on a highway at a speed that is greater, that is greater than reasonable or prudent, now this is a very debatable term, uh, however, the, uh, the vehicle code and the manual of uniform traffic control devices defines the reasonable and prudent speed as not exceeded by eighty-five percent of, of the, the vehicles that are surveyed on a given road segment.
But we can change that if there's other mitigating factors.
That's correct, so what are the factors that influence, uh, the speed of, of a car as, as they're driving down a given roadway, it's, it's the roadway conditions themselves, is the roadway flat, is it, uh, does it hilly, are there curves, or is it straight, is it wide, narrow, what, what's, what's next to the roadway in terms of homes, vegetation, you know, is, does it have an open feel to it, are there traffic controls, you know, speed, you know, uh, whether it's stop signs or, or signals or roundabouts present to affect their speeds, or any other factors, the presence of pedestrians or bicyclists, uh, in the vicinity in high concentrations, so why do we need to, to perform these engineering traffic studies, we're, we're trying to find what the prevailing speed is, again, speed limits are based on how fast most of the motorists feel is the appropriate speed to drive on that roadway, you know, instead of setting an arbitrary limit and saying, this is what we want you to drive, the roadway conditions are what they are, and, and we're trying to establish a speed limit that most of the motorists are going to be able to adhere to, and this also allows us to, uh, use radar for speed enforcement on the roadways, because the officers can cite the Engineering and Traffic Survey in traffic court, show that it is valid, and, and demonstrate that they issued a citation for a motorist that was traveling in excess of, of the posted speed limit, and, and really what we're trying to do is encourage uniform traffic driving behavior, the more people that are driving, you know, within five or ten miles an hour of the speed limit, uh, the safer, you know, you get less tailgating, you get less road rage, you know, you get less illegal or unsafe passing, so this is, uh, I'm not going to go through everything here on the list, but, but, but these are the sections of the California Vehicle Code that, um, address the, uh, adoption of speed limits, we also have to follow the processes in the manual of uniform traffic control devices, and the California Manual for Setting Speed Limits, and then, uh, we're here this evening because, uh, Folsom Municipal Code, uh, gives the city council the authority to establish speed limits, so this is an example of what a speed, uh, engineering and traffic survey looks like, uh, the first page just summarizes, uh, the roadway name and the segment that's being analyzed, uh, so from one intersection to the next, um, what the existing conditions are in terms of, um, so, the speed of traffic, the amount of, uh, the vehicle volumes that are being experienced on that roadway, uh, the length of the segment, and, uh, and also the traffic, uh, collision history, because that's relevant, uh, as Councilmember Howell pointed out, you can cite certain factors that will allow you to go down from the eighty-fifth percentile, and sometimes a, uh, high traffic collision rate can be used to justify a lower speed limit, and then this, uh, is the actual raw data that's collected, uh, you know, you have a technician that goes out, uh, to the given roadway segment with, uh, a radar device, usually a handheld radar device, in an unmarked car, tries to find a, a location where they're not affected by, um, conditions like a curve or, or traffic control devices, and certainly not on a day when there's, you know, a robust, uh, enforcement presence that, that could be inducing people to drive at a, uh, artificially low speed on that particular day, uh, and then, so, they survey between one hundred and two hundred vehicles that are traveling at, under free flow conditions, and then they, they'll document, uh, each of the speeds that are recorded, and, and you'll notice, for those that are into statistics in any way, shape, or form, that, that it forms generally a bell curve, you know, where the speeds that are on the high end, or, or, excuse me, the high end or the low end, tend to be very low, and then the, the very modest speeds are here in the middle, and, and that's what you're looking for, is a nice bell curve, and you're trying to find that eighty-fifth percentile speed, that means the majority of the cars that are, are traveling on the road will be able to adhere to that speed limit, and there's everything I just said about the first page, and these surveys, uh, just, you know, for clarification, these were not performed by your staff, we hired a licensed engineer, uh, from TJKM, and he and his staff, uh, collected the raw data, performed all the analysis, and made the recommendations to the speed limits, again, uh, at the bottom of each, uh, survey, this is where we do identify the average speed, the eighty-fifth percentile, and the ten mile per hour pace, which is just really the, you, you're finding the, 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 the range of ten miles per hour in which the most cars were traveling.
Is that ten miles per hour above posted p- speed?
Not necessarily, I mean, ideally, it, it would be, um, just below or bracketing what the posted speed is, like, because again, we're trying to create as much uniformity as possible, get as many motorists to travel at or near the speed limit, and, and so if your ten mile per hour pace is from five miles below to five miles per hour above your posted speed limit, that would probably be acceptable.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, the, we're going to get down into the weeds just a little bit further here about, um, the eighty-fifth percentile has to be rounded to the near, to one of the five mile per hour increments on either side, you know, because all speed limits, as we know, are, are in five mile per hour increments, so in this example, uh, a random road segment that had an eighty-fifth percentile speed of forty-six miles per hour, according to the vehicle code, you would round it down to the nearest five mile per hour increment, and you could not adjust it any further from there, in this example, where an eighty-fifth percentile speed was forty-eight, you would be required initially to round it to the next nearest five mile per hour increment, which is the higher limit, but then because you round it up, you do get to take into consideration engineering factors that would justify bringing the speed limit back down, and, and I, I know that, that's, that might be a little confusing, but what we're, by going up, rounding up, we can say, rather than leaving it at the higher speed limit, we have factors such as traffic collision. as traffic collision history, or a large, a high volume of bicycles and pedestrians along that road segment, or, you know, curves that limit people's speed, things that are not readily apparent to the motorist, that we as, as an agency feel justify bringing that speed limit back down. And those can be challenged in court, and there are times when, you know, the traffic court might say, I don't know that I agree that that's a valid reason for lowering the limit. But more often than not, they'll accept what we've concluded, since they know that we're most in, we have the most knowledge about the roadway conditions and the traffic conditions in our jurisdiction. And that's all I have.
Mark, I have a question. When you perform the speed studies, does the time of day or duration of hours matter when doing the study?
It does somewhat, Councilmember Rodriguez. We try to avoid periods of high traffic, you know, like the rush hour periods, because you're having conditions there where the motorists aren't traveling at free-flow conditions, they're affected by the presence of the vehicles around them. Generally, the technicians will go out and collect the data on a weekday, midday, you know, so like late morning to early afternoon, where you, you're going to get a lot of free-flow traffic conditions, and they'll be out there as long as it takes to get a valid statistical sample.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing then, and anybody that's in the audience that would like to speak on this particular matter, now's your opportunity. Just come to the mic.
You have no request to speak so far.
Okay. Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and...
I'll move ordinance 1310.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Okay, Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchurla?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes.
Okay, please call the next item.
Okay, your next item is new business, item number 20. This is resolution number 10573, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the Home Key Grant in the amount of up to $4 million from the state of California Department of Housing and Community Development and Appropriation of Funds.
Good evening, Mayor Kozlowski and councilmembers. Stephanie Henry, Community Development, Senior Planner. So this final item before you this evening is a resolution requesting city council approval for a state grant, Home Key Grant, in an amount not to exceed $4 million for the Bidwell Streets Studios project. So some background for you. In February of this year, prior to the pandemic, the Hirani Family Foundation purchased the Folsom Lodge Motel and Storage Unit Facility located at 501 East Bidwell Street with the intent of converting the motel portion into affordable studio apartment units. So the Hirani Foundation, in partnership with Sack Commercial Properties, who I'm going to refer to probably as the developer going forward in this presentation, their intent was to do some upgrades, some exterior upgrades to the facility, to like rehabilitate it, to complement kind of the, what's going on with the Bidwell, the Bidwell Point and Bidwell Place projects, which are affordable projects on East Bidwell Street, and then to convert the interiors into studio units. And in addition, their proposal would be to seek city funding to offset the costs associated with providing affordable housing project. So in July of this year, so July of 2020, the city actually received a preliminary request for funding for the Bidwell Streets project to convert the motel into studio units for affordable housing. At the same time, however, the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development, issued a notice of funding availability, which is referred to as a NOFA, for a grant for the Home Key Grant Funds. And what the Home Key Grant Funds are for is to provide funding to jurisdictions who can partner with other entities to provide rapid housing for individuals who are homeless or at risk of experiencing homelessness and who are at risk of COVID-19. Another thing to point out with the Home Key Funds is that these funds are primarily being funded through the state's CARES Act, and as a result, these funds need to be expended by, the majority of these funds need to be expended by December 30th of this year, so basically in three more weeks. But when the notice of funding came out, there was a six-month window for the funding. So since it needs to be expended rapidly and it has to do with housing, one of the primary types of projects that is eligible is to convert motels or hotels into either temporary transitional housing or permanent supportive housing. So knowing that the city has limited funding available for housing projects, and seeing that the Bidwell Streets Studios project really aligned well with the eligibility requirements of the Home Key Funds, city staff and the developer determined that it made sense to apply to those state funds, to see if we could get those funds to help support this project. So that being said, the city council actually approved a resolution in September, which authorized the city manager to submit an application to the state for the Home Key Funds for the Bidwell Streets Studios project. With our particular application, the request was for $100,000 per unit. So there's 25 units, so that's $2.5 million, which would be used by the city, basically, to purchase an affordability covenant on the property, which de- restricts the property to affordable housing for a period of 55 years. And then also another part of that application was to request the two-year operating subsidy that's allowed under the NOFA. And then it's also important to point out that in addition to providing housing, the Home Key Grant requires a supportive housing component, so there needs to be supportive services that are connected to the housing. So to that end, the developer has entered into a memorandum of understanding with Hope Cooperative. Hope Cooperative was formerly known as TLC, and they actually own and operate an affordable housing project in Folsom. It's Folsom, Folsom Oaks on Bidwell Street, and that has 18 units of supportive housing. So they also have experience throughout the Sacramento region and have had experience for over 40 years. So under this memorandum of understanding that Hope Cooperative will be actually providing the supportive services for individuals housed at Bidwell Streets Studios. So like I said, we did submit an application in September. As indicated in the staff report, there was an overwhelming response to the Home Key Program. There was basically 147 applications submitted to the state totaling about 100, I mean, $1.06 billion in funding, which far exceeded the $600 million allocated to the program. So since September, or during September and October, the state has been issuing, kind of rolling approvals for projects that kind of hit their scoring, and those are projects that could, you know, rapidly house individuals. As also indicated in the staff report, we were not one of those initial projects to be selected. However, we kept moving forward. We have an ambassador with the state that is focused just on our projects, so we continue to work with our ambassador to provide additional updates and information, and to let her know that we still really think that our project is an eligible use of those Home Key Funds, and that if one of those other projects happened to fall off because they couldn't meet some of the requirements, we were, you know, wanted to be ready to go. So with that being said, on November 24th of this year, so two weeks ago, we had a meeting with HCD leadership and the underwriting staff, and they notified us that we were receiving a conditional Home Key Grant reserve approval. And what that means is that they were, they were putting us together with their underwriting team to work through the budget, to see what our exact allocation would be. That mostly has to do with the operating expenses, the two-year subsidy for operating expenses, and that work with us on getting all of our other required documentation into them, one of which is we would need to sign a standard agreement, which we would need to do like in the next week, two weeks, so that we would be able to expend the funds to purchase the affordability covenant by December 30th. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm available, but we also have the developer here, as well as Hope Cooperative.
Are there any questions from the council?
No, as I said last time, great project, and I'm really, really happy that this came through as a Thanksgiving present.
Mm-hmm.
I know.
Agreed.
Well, if there are no questions, I will move...
I'll second it.
Do we need to see if there's public, anybody from the public that wanted to comment? Or give the developer an opportunity if he wanted to add anything?
And I just want to definitely point out that we are like this close to getting that final approval, but we're still in that process of kind of checking all the boxes for the state.
We are grateful for your tenaciousness.
I would like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor. Several months ago, I toured this property with city staff and Mr. Schalzy, and I will be honest, that I was skeptical about this plan. But I have to tell you that I love what Mr. Hirani and Mr. Schalzy have come up with. I love the rendering, especially the outside. I'm thrilled that it actually has a design aesthetic, what I would kind of call Tahoe-y, lodge-y, I mean, I just love it. And I'm very, very appreciative that Mr. Hirani and Mr. Schalzy have made a commitment that this property will be clean and safe and attractive and well-run, because that is absolutely our expectation also. So kudos to you, I'm 100% behind this. I do want to make a comment to staff, though. I think, you know, there's kind of a vision of what many of us have going forward for the Central Business District. It's looking a little tired. We need revitalization projects like this to breathe some life into that part of the city. And in order to do that, not every housing project in the Central Business District can be affordable units. We have to have some market rate in order to support the coffee shops and the restaurants and the dry cleaners and all of those things around this. So I don't want to take anything away from this project, I love it. I just want us to think, you know, big picture, what we all want that Central Business District to be 10, 15, 20 years from now. Thank you.
Understood, Vice Mayor. We understand there's a balance, and we're looking to strike that.
Right. I just want, you know, this is the first time I was hearing, I think, I know, last Friday, you gave us a briefing also?
Yes.
I sincerely want to thank you. I know, 147 applications for $1.6 billion, we got $4 million. Kudos to the city staff. I don't know who authorized that request and application, sometimes state has their own mind, but we got the funds. I want to sincerely thank the staff on whom so you are involved in this one.
Did we have any other requests to speak?
You have no formal request to speak on this item, but I think Mr. Schalzy would like to speak. Come on down.
Good evening, councilmembers, and first I want to congratulate Member Chalamchurla and Rodriguez for their new appointment.
Thank you.
And for your new appointment as mayor and vice mayor, and everybody else that's involved, Merry Christmas to all. I just wanted to come up here and talk about, a little bit about what we've gone through and our vision of what we had when we started this. And Mr. Hirani, Mo, a good friend of mine and business partner, we worked on this, started with the city in about December, before we, we had it in escrow, we were trying to figure out what we could do and how we can get to where we needed to be. And along in conjunction with the city staff, working diligently to find a means to an end here, we got literally down to the wire on the last day, and we just weren't where we needed to be. But Hirani Family Foundation and Mo decided that they were going to pull the trigger based on what we had with the, understanding with the city of where they wanted to see the direction, and then our partnership. So they stepped up, we all stepped up to take that challenge and took that risk. And here we are, nine, 10 months later, with a full, a full project that's going to really enhance the Central Business District, and not only do that, but create a great opportunity for homes, for people that need them. And so I just want to personally thank the staff and everybody involved for their hard work on this project, and it, I couldn't have asked for a better outcome. We were going after city funds to try and get this done, and this came about, and it's all about timing sometimes, and I just think the fact that just, you know, certain people in taking an opportunity to try and make something work and coming together as a team, so I just want to show my appreciation to everybody that worked on this. And we're excited about it, and we're ready to go, so. And Erin from Hope, she'd like to say a few words. Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, my name is Erin Johansson, and I'm the CEO of Hope Cooperative, formerly known as TLCS, and many of you, well, I know for sure, Councilmember Howell was part of the group that approved our last project in 2011.
I think I'm the only one that was here.
Yes. So I'm going to, we want to thank you for your support. This project would not have happened without the tenacity of your staff. Stephanie and team, they never let a day go by that they weren't connecting with the state and making sure that they, we're still here, we just need this little bit of money out of your huge pot, and we have a way to really make it happen, and that the community needs this housing really badly. I appreciate so much, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Aquino, about what you want for your city, and we appreciate that very much. We plan to be a good partner in that effort, and, but folks that will live here need this housing desperately, so we really appreciate your support and willingness to take this leap with us.
And I want to, I want to thank you again, having been the only person who was sitting here when we went through the torture that was the project on Bidwell Street, you will recall.
Yes.
It was extremely controversial, and I've had conversations with people a couple of times in the last year or so, two years maybe, that there, I'm not aware of any problems that have ever occurred at the Bidwell Street property, and that is, that is very, very important in my feeling that this, that this new project is going to be as well-run as Bidwell Street is. And thanks again to Mo and Doug, because this, I never understood why it was called the Folsom Lodge, and I've lived here for 36 years, and this is one of the biggest facelifts that the city is ever going to get on an existing building, and it's thank you to everybody that was involved in this.
Thank you for your comments. We actually have a project in Citrus Heights where we brought the city of Citrus Heights staff over to look at our Folsom Oaks apartment, and they were so impressed with it, they authorized a project there as well. So thank you all for all of your support, appreciate it.
That's great. Yeah, projects like this take somebody to start with a great idea and be a true believer and bring everybody else along, and then it takes a whole bunch of true believers to make it happen, so great work to everybody. And I will entertain a motion.
Okay.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
A hearty yes.
Chalamchurla?
Yes, please.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes, of course. Okay, call the next item?
So this takes us to the joint city council meeting with the Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, South of Fifty Parking Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to call to order...
You need to adjourn the first one first.
Oh, we're adjourning our regular meeting for a few minutes to adjourn, to call to order the joint city council meeting of the Folsom Redevelopment Successor Agency, Folsom Public Financing Authority, South of Fifty Parking Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Here.
Chalamchela?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
And Rodriguez?
Here.
Okay, call the first item, please.
Your one and only item on this joint agenda tonight is your consent calendar.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Kozlowski?
Yes. Okay, we'll adjourn the joint city council agenda, reconvene our city council meeting, and ask the city manager for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has received the final copper pipe pinhole leak investigation memorandum from water quality and corrosion consultant HDR. The city retained HDR to review the city's historical water quality data, perform a detailed forensic analysis on sample copper pipes with pinhole leaks, and develop recommendations to prevent and significantly slow pinhole leaks from occurring. As promised, we immediately posted the report at www.folsom.ca.us/pinholeleaks. More information will be provided following staff review and analysis. I would like to remind residents that on November tenth, the Folsom City Council authorized a waiver of permit and inspection fees for any repairs related to pinhole copper pipe leaks. Residents who already incurred fees will be refunded, and a notification letter to affected residents was mailed out last week. Thanks to the men and women of the Folsom Police and Fire Department and intrepid CAPS volunteers, Santa Claus and his crew of elves continue to visit Folsom neighborhoods through December tenth. Rather than stopping in neighborhoods this year, a convoy of emergency vehicles are escorting Santa slowly through the routes. Due to the pandemic, residents are asked to remember to socially distance, wear a mask or face covering, and to observe other safety precautions. You can find Santa's schedule and information at folsomsantatracker.com. The city continues to promote supporting local businesses in partnership with the Folsom Chamber of Commerce. Just a reminder that when we shop local, we ensure the economic impact of our purchases stays local. Shopping locally supports the local economy, promotes a thriving community, and contributes to a high quality of life in Folsom. Find out more at hashtag we support Folsom or wesupportfolsom.com. The gallery at forty-eight Natoma now offers retail shopping hours from eleven AM to one-thirty PM Tuesdays and Fridays. You can also make a shopping appointment between nine and four, Monday through Friday. Paintings and mosaics created by professional fine artists are available for sale, plus a variety of artisan-made jewelry, glass art, and small gift items. Proceeds from the sales help support local fine artists and artisans and public art programs for all ages. If you're looking for another unusual Christmas gift, you can help support the animals at our Folsom Zoo Sanctuary by shopping at the zoo's new online gift shop. Find unique gift items for the special people on your holiday shopping list, or purchase an honorary animal adoption in their name. You can find out more at folsomzofriends.org. And finally, skate shop, dine, and enjoy the holiday magic in the heart of Folsom. The Folsom Historic District Ice Rink is now open with new safety protocols during the COVID-19 pandemic. Tickets must be purchased in advance to ensure social distancing. Learn more at folsomicrink.com. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Terrific. Any council comments? Sarah?
Just a couple things. For the past two years, I have represented the city on the Local Agency Formation Commission, otherwise known as LAFCO, which is the governing body that handles annexations and spheres of influence and all that sort of stuff. It's a seven-member board. The county of Sacramento has two seats. The city of Sacramento has a seat. Special districts have two seats. The public has a seat. And then the cities that are not the city of Sacramento share a seat, and we rotate that. So I served, Folsom had that seat for the past two years, and I sat there, but we have now passed that on to Rancho Cordova. Really, I think we maybe had one controversial thing my whole time, and it was my very first meeting in two years. So other than that, just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, happy new year, and, Mr. Mayor, excellent job on your first meeting.
YK, anything? YK, anything for the good of the order?
Certainly. I think yesterday was a great day. It's a swearing-in ceremony, you know. I want to thank you, you know, the members who all ran. I know last time, yesterday, I didn't get a chance to, you know, say about it. There's another five members. Mark Moore is here, due diligently. Thank you, Mark, for running, and other remaining four members also. I know I'm celebrating my Santa. You all can see it. My battery power is not working. As I mentioned yesterday also, I sincerely request, when you're celebrating in your holiday season, this is more for the residents, please, you know, be careful, and the numbers are growing up. I know it's, we are all in this tragedy. And as I requested yesterday also, I'm going to request again the residents, if you are entering into your shop, you see no hand sanitizer at the doors, please request one to put at the door, not only at the cash register. You know, that's my request. I know we can always request our business owners. And otherwise, we are looking forward for a great holidays and Merry Christmas, everyone. And I have a great team here, you know, all my colleagues. I'm looking forward for twenty twenty-one. Thank you again.
Rosario?
Well, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday, or Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and also while supporting your local retail shops this holiday season, remember to wear a mask and social distance. And the last one is, if I could make a request for a future meeting, to put the Hinkle Creek issue on the agenda for discussion at some point.
Okay.
That's it. All right, that's it.
Because we didn't have enough fun the first time.
Well, everybody's got to get in on the fun on that one, so...
Happy holidays to everybody. I got a phone call from somebody that was at the meeting last night thanking me for doing my typical traffic report, and that particular individual was nearly T-boned at an intersection because somebody ran through a fully red light. So I'm going to remind everybody yet again, YK asked the question earlier of Mr. Rackman, that why are the speeds, the eighty-fifth percentile is over the speed limit? Because right now, and it seems to be getting worse, everybody just assumes that everyone else is home, so they can just drive however they want anywhere they're going. That's not true. There are other people out there, and this person that was at the meeting last night could have been, it could have been a very different phone call. I could have been getting a phone call from the emergency room or from a morgue. So please pay attention. Keep in mind that the other interesting statistic during the pandemic has been that alcohol sales are up like four hundred percent. So they may not have come from a bar, but they could have been drinking at home. So please be careful. The yellow light means put your foot on the brake, not on the gas. Happy holidays, happy new year, and we'll see you in January. And hopefully, twenty twenty-one is going to be way better than twenty twenty.
Hopefully. Just two quick things. The, for those of you that were here for our meeting or watched the meeting last night, there was a long discussion about a proposed ordinance at the Sack County Board, that was the Sack County Board of Supervisors was going to consider today at their meeting. Our, I just want to report that our advocacy was successful in having them remove that from their agenda, and we...
Oh, they just took it off the agenda? They didn't even...
They didn't even consider it. They just pulled it from the agenda altogether. And that is, that is in large part due to the, you know, unanimous, resolute communications that came from the Folsom Chamber of Commerce, the city of Folsom, and lots of our residents. I was told by one of the supervisors when I talked to them that they got two thousand six hundred pieces of communication in opposition to that. So you can successfully move the rock when it is worth moving. So anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody. Citrus Heights did. Yeah, yeah, Citrus Heights' letter Elaine wrote, so... Yeah. No, no, wait. No, I'm making light of that. The letter from Citrus Heights was important and timely, because that was just about the moment when they pulled it from their agenda. So hopefully, it doesn't come back, but we will be here to keep an eye out for things like that that are unnecessarily punitive to our business community. Exactly, exactly. So on that same topic, given the pandemic and the limitations that have been placed on, placed on a lot of our local small businesses, I would implore everybody to shop local for Christmas. And regardless of if you can eat inside or outside, or you have to take it away and eat it at your own home, please patronize our local restaurants. They need it now more than ever, and I will echo the well wishes for the holidays to everybody. Thank you very much. And at seven forty-five, we are adjourned. Awesome.